Hello, I'm Deb Brinkman, President of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park, I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates and those viewing this forum on Civic Channel TV, Channel 17. Tonight's forum will be rerun on Channel 17 until the completion of the election on November 2. Our moderator, Krista Adewemi. Krista is a member of South Tonka Chapter of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization, which promotes political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose political parties or individual candidates. The views in this forum are those of the candidates. Sponsorship of this forum by the League of Women Voters is not an endorsement of any of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited and all viable candidates are in attendance tonight. We encourage our League of Members as we encourage each of you to be involved in the community and political party of your choice. We ask that you consider becoming a member of the League of Women Voters and help us continue to provide the citizens of our community the opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. For more information about membership, please contact us at l w v m n dot org and click on the links to the local League sites. Alright, so we will turn our attention then to Kristi, who is our moderator, and who will lead us into the candidate forum.
Alright, hi and welcome. I am Krista Adewemi of the South Tonka League of Women Voters, and I am the moderator for tonight's St. Louis Park School District Number 283 School Board Candidates Forum. The following candidates have filed to run for the three open seats. Anne Casey, Abdii Hakim, Arabo Ibrahim, and Mary Kay Tomback. Tonight's candidate questions include questions from constituents submitted via email to League of Women Voters of St. Louis, I'm sorry, St. Louis Park, and League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park members. We will be using a timekeeper, so everyone has the same amount of time to respond to the questions. We will begin with candidate opening statements. Statements will be given in alphabetical order and are limited to two minutes each. We will be alternating candidates, so each gets to respond first to a question. Each candidate will have one minute and 30 seconds to respond to the questions. We will begin with Anne Casey for her opening statement.
Thank you, Krista. Thanks, everyone, for having us tonight. My name is Anne Casey. I have lived in St. Louis Park for 13 years. I've got two kids in St. Louis Park Public Schools, a 10th grader at the high school and an 8th grader at the middle school. And I have been fortunate and honored to serve on the St. Louis Park School Board since January 2018. In that time, I have represented St. Louis Park on the Board of Intermediate District 287 for the past three years. And I've also served on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. I've served as a board liaison to Aquila Elementary School, St. Louis Park High School, the Community Education Advisory Committee, the Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation, and for the last year, the COVID Planning Team for the school district. I've been the board's vice chair for the past two years, and in that role, I have led the board's policy committee for two years and the board's evaluation process for Superintendent Ossai. I am running for reelection so that I can use the knowledge and the skills and the experience that I've gained in these past four years. None of the last one or one and a half, which was not at all what we expected. It would be four years ago when we were sitting in the city hall having this conversation. But I really want to continue to work to build a district that prepares every student for livelihood, for community, and for participation in democracy. So I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Abdii Hakim.
You're muted, Abdii Hakim.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting these events. I also would like to thank the people who will watch later. My name is Abdii Hakim Ibrahim. I am a father of three kids. I'm also a husband. I am Somali-American immigrant who come to this country 2014 as the only member of the family. Since I moved here in St. Louis, but I am a very active member of the community. Right now, I am Commissioner at the Police Advisory Committee. I was involved in a SLB District Reverendum campaign. Also, I was complete county committee for 2020 cents. I am a community organizer for social justice. I'm running for school board because we need true representations that reflects all of us, not just those at the top. I'm running to serve all the students in our community, but also give a voice to the minorities' students. Thank you.
Great, and we will go with Mary and your opening statement next.
Thank you so much, Krista, and thank you, obviously, to the League. You all do this every year, and I know it's of value to our community. So I appreciate being here again tonight. My name is Mary. My husband Matt and I have lived in St. Louis Park for 13 years also. We have three kids in the district. They've gone to Aquila, Susan Linger in the middle school. Now I've got two at the high school, and my daughter just started at the middle school. I also began my first term four years ago. I became vice chair the year after that, and I am just finishing up my second year as board chair. And if you had asked me a few months ago, or even a few weeks ago, if I was running for reelection, I would have given you a hard no. The last 18 months have tested us all in unimaginable ways. And being an elected official during this time and helping to run a public school district has truly taken its toll. And I frankly didn't think that I could continue in this role and do the job well. But then through the summer, and as this school year has started, I've been reminded of why I love this work and why it matters so much. I watched 300 seniors march onto our football field to graduate. So happy to be together. I took part in the evaluation of Superintendent Ossai and had a chance to reflect on what a tremendous leader he has been, especially during the last 18 months. And then a few months, a few weeks ago, I welcomed back our teachers and our staff, knowing how they arose to the challenge last year and decided to show up again this year to keep doing this work because they know how important it is. And I realized I wanted to stay part of the team, and I wanted to continue the incredible work that this district is doing to educate and deliberate and to inspire members of our entire community. So I would be honored by your vote and honored to continue this work. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our questions. And if you cannot hear me or need clarification on something, please let me know. Each candidate has two minutes, I'm sorry, a minute and 30 seconds to answer each question. So we will start our questions off with Anne Abdii Hakim and then Mary. That will be our order, and then our next question, the order will change, and I will remind you. Our first question for, we'll start with Anne. What are your thoughts about mandating COVID-19 vaccination for all St. Louis Park teachers and students who aren't eligible? And how would you respond to parents who don't agree with students wearing masks to school? Anne, we'll start with you.
On the vaccine question, I mentioned earlier that I sit on intermediate district 287 on the board of that district, which has 11 West Metro districts and a board member from each one. And we did pass a vaccine requirement for our staff in that district to either show proof of vaccination or be tested once a week at school. And I would be supportive of that for St. Louis Park as well. In terms of mask mandates, I think that this has been honestly an easier decision this year. We have guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education that say that, that recommend, strongly recommend masking for students that aren't vaccinated and are vaccinated in both. And I think that as a non-expert in public health, and I don't know any other board member who is an expert in public health, it's very easy for me to go along with the guidelines that our public health experts have given us.
Okay, we will move on to our next candidate, Abdii Hakim. If you need me to repeat the question, I certainly can. What are your thoughts about mandating COVID-19 vaccination for all St. Louis Park teachers and students who are eligible? How would you respond to parents who don't agree with students wearing masks to school?
So, from my understanding, it's two questions. So the first one is the mandate, and the second one is the mask, right?
That is correct. So the first question is, what are your thoughts about mandating COVID-19 vaccination for all St. Louis Park teachers and students?
So I will echo what Anne says, but regarding to the mandating of vaccines, I think it's up to individuals. But I will support wearing a mask and also following the guidelines, CDC and the school board already, you know, they approve already. So I think I'll say that. Ask myself, I'm vaccinated already, me and my family, we have the vaccination, so. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, and the second part of that question too is how would you respond to parents who don't agree with students wearing masks to school?
I think it's, you know, it's very important to wear in masks because it saves lives, we know, you know, in order to reduce the spread, you know, the COVID-19s, you know. And I think the school board unanimously has already passed the mask mandate already, so it's in place already. So I will, I'm on board with that, so that's all I have to say. So everybody must wear in the mask in the school.
Okay. Thank you. And Mary, I will go ahead and reread the question for you as well. What are your thoughts about mandating COVID-19 vaccination for all St. Louis Park teachers and students who aren't eligible? How would you respond to parents who don't agree with students wearing masks to school?
With respect to the vaccine mandates, it's the two questions. With respect to teachers, and I would just add, staff, teachers and staff mandating vaccines for them. This is in discussion already. Superintendent Ossai is going to be consulting with various union group leadership to get their take on it and see how they feel. But at this point, I am pretty supportive of this idea. We've got larger districts in the metro who have already done this. And as long as we offer the alternative, which is regular testing and proof of negative tests, then I can get behind a vaccine mandate. It's different for students, though, and I need everybody to understand this because St. Louis Park Public Schools is legally required to educate every student who lives in St. Louis Park. And we do not have the authority, the legal authority, to decide what the vaccine schedule is for students. And so we have no legal grounds to mandate vaccines for our kids. And so until the state tells us otherwise, that's not on the table. With respect to the mask mandates, this is not a hypothetical question. We have already been dealing with this on the district. In the district, I understand parents are upset, but as Anne mentions, I'm not a public health expert. I'm going to follow the guidance of the public health experts. When they tell us otherwise, we'll revisit this. But I should add, our students are doing great with this masking policy by and large. It's not perfect, but they are rising to the challenge too.
Thank you. So our next question. I'm sorry, I think we'll go with Ibrahim next to start, because that sounds correct. And so I'll go ahead and read the first question. Do you think hybrid learning or rotating learning online to in-person or remote learning should be permanent option for students who are interested?
I mean, last year, everybody knows, it was difficult for everybody, you know. The model was different, you know. COVID, you know, teach us a lot, you know, especially of, you know, the birth I'm coming from for, you know, minority groups, you know. We were having a lot of difficult things, you know. There is a lot of, you know, digital literacy, a lot of things. So, you know, what I say is, you know, it's always be nice to have options, you know. People, they have options whether they, you know, they want to continue distance learning or HABER. But, you know, as wise, can you say the second part of the question?
Yes. If e-learning should be, e-learning and hybrid learning, sorry, should be given as an option to all students throughout the rest of the year? To students who are interested.
Yeah, I think I will agree that.
Okay, we will have Mary answer that question. Do you think hybrid learning, rotating learning online to in-person or remote learning should be a permanent option for students who are interested?
I wish I had about two hours to answer this question. It is very complex because I can tell you just some of the quick challenges are high. You know, hybrid causes me the most kind of concern because I think about teachers and staff in front of the classroom who are trying to teach to kids who are present with them and kids who are on the computer. And what we learned last year is that that is not sustainable. That is just, that doesn't work. If we had enough time to really dig in and create a great model where we weren't just continually in reaction mode, right? Constantly pivoting among models based on what infection rates were. I think that this idea has a lot of legs. And I would, I know that some of our students actually performed better and their mental health thrived in a distance learning model or in a model that provided more flexibility about, for example, the four-day-a-week high school schedule. And so I would want ample time to be able to explore this opportunity and to do it well, not to do it in a reactionary way without enough time to plan properly.
Thank you. Anne, do you think hybrid rotating learning online to in-person or remote learning should be permanent option for students who are interested?
Yes and no. I mean, we, do I think right now, this year, we need to provide an option for students who do not want to be in person during the pandemic? Yes, and we have offered that option. We had to go through Eden Prairie Online for a bunch of reasons. But we're keeping our kids enrolled in St. Louis Park, but doing school through Eden Prairie Online if their families need a full-time distance learning option this year during the COVID pandemic. And I am absolutely supportive of that. Going forward, I think like Mary said, it is complicated. We did see during the pandemic, out of necessity, we had kids in distance learning, and we did see some kids who did better for their mental health or for, I knew, I know kids who really liked it because they could get their schoolwork done and then go work in a job. I think that there are a lot of reasons why some kind of of distance learning or even a part-time distance learning option is going to be attractive in the future. I don't, I think that ship has sailed, whether or not we have to, whether or not it exists, it exists. And so we have to, we have to deal with that. I think it's going to be very difficult for a district our size to provide a full-time rigorous and comprehensive option, especially at the secondary level. So it's a complicated question, but for right now, yes.
I would like to add, because I have two kids last year. So my 10th year, 10th grade, she was going to distance learning, and she loved it. But my kindergarten, he was going to HABER in the school. So when, you know, say it's permanent because the condition right now we had in COVID-19, that's how I understand when you say permanent, not like, you know, after that. So that's what I want to add.
Thank you. So our next question. What strategies should we be implementing to increase the success of Black Indigenous students of color and student body and more BIPOC staff? We'll start this question with Mary.
Okay. Again, I feel like I want to talk for a really long time on this. We should start off by mentioning that, as Anne referenced, she was on this mini. But we just instituted the Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation in St. Louis Park Public Schools. We've had strategic plans, you know, for all time, but this is the Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation, meaning that we are willing to put the need to attend to this work front and center. And the strategies that are being adopted are policymaking from a board perspective, right? So, you know, I think that this is a good opportunity to remind people what the school board members can actually do and what the school board can do is write policies. And the policies that we have been writing in the last year, drafting, revising, and adopting have all had a race equity focus to them so that we are making sure that every policy that we are adopting is considering the needs and the outcomes of our BIPOC students. And time is running out, but I, so I will also add specifically with respect to staff that students need to see themselves represented in front of the classroom, the teachers and the staff in our buildings. And one of the best ways that we recruit them is actually to retain them and to make the ones we have so happy to be in our district and so feeling so valued and worthy that they are communicating with their colleagues and their friends so that we have a robust pool of people who have been here a while and want to come and join us.
Thank you. Anne will answer next. What strategies should we BIPOC staff?
I'm sorry, Krista, could you repeat? I missed part of that. I don't know if it was me or you.
Certainly. What strategies should we be implementing to increase the success of BIPOC students and create, increase a more diverse staff?
Yeah, million-dollar question, billion-dollar question probably. Like Mary said, we've been working at this at a policy level, at a strategic plan level, and our policy committee that we just formed in 2020 has been working on a policy specifically entitled racial equity. And that was part of a resolution that the board made in the summer of 2020 to act as a board for, intentionally for racial equity. So the strategic plan has board members that sit on that, but the board doesn't own the strategic plan, but the board owns policy. And so we have been working on a policy, and I'm going to give you some of our, just the list of our guiding principles in that policy is culturally responsive pedagogy, differentiating resources when we have to in order to provide equitable opportunities for students of color, restorative practices and reducing exclusionary discipline practices, recruiting, like Mary said, and retaining our amazing staff, community and family engagement. I'm trying to think if there was, there's one or two more. But those are the kinds of things that are, we're working to write into policy so that those will outlive us on the board. Those ideas will outlive us on the board because it's going to take longer than the next four years for us to get there.
Thank you. Abdii Hakim, what strategies should we do, should we be implementing to increase the success of BIPOC students?
Yeah, it's really a very good question, and I can't talk an hour about that, but I would like to summarize in four points. Equity indication extremely important. So we would like to have a strategic focus in areas. The first one I would like to say, positive is cool culture. That's inclusive culture. We have to listen to kids. We have to listen to parents with the different cultures. The second one I would like is cultural relevant teaching. We have to train the teachers to help to bridge the gaps and engage the students underrepresented. The other one, I want the evaluation program. What's working, what's not working? We have to take it up. What's not working? Because we can't keep doing the same thing and again, expect this different result. And the last one I want to do is equity within and beyond the classroom. St. Louis is a great, you know, the great place, and the greatest insurance they have is the diversity. I'm running out of time, but, you know, but what I'm saying is that's collective responsibility. You know, it's not single one. I think together we can make the great district even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will actually start with Abdii Hakim, and it is about racial diversity, so it's the same topic. What strategies should we be implementing to increase the success of BIPOC students? Oh, I'm sorry. There it is. What more could be done to reduce the racial achievement gap for St. Louis Park students? And how will you address the real or perceived ESL, English as Second Language, inequalities?
That's a really very good question, you know. Everybody knows we have an issue in, you know, gap, bridging it, whatever you call it, you know. It's all over the Minnesota, you know. And, you know, one of the things we would like, you know, to help these students, you know, to create, you know, after-school programs, reading interventions, you know, or whatever they need help, whether they reading or math or ALL, you know, to find the perfect timing, you know, to do that, you know. Example, helping ALL classes, you know, if you want to help someone in. One of the things the community they care about me is some of the kids, they are having ALL classes. But what is happening is they're missing out, pulling out from the glasses and the missing math or science. Now we created two more problems instead of solving ones. So how can we help those kids? How can we help those, you know, we can help all these things, you know, by managing, you know. So I think time's up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anne, the same question. What more could be done to reduce the racial achievement gap for St. Louis Park students? And how will you address the real or perceived ESL, English as Second Language, inequalities?
I think the key word that you maybe used there is perceived. I want to, and I think Abdii Hakim spoke to this beautifully. I think, one, I mean, I guess I'm answering the multilingual question first, but that we need adults in this, in these schools and in our community who understand that being multilingual is a gift and not a deficit or a disability. It is an asset, it's a strength. We have a whole school set aside for students who learn English at home to learn a second language. And so, and that is, that is a great benefit to them. And so I think that we really do ourselves and our students a huge disservice when we see multilingual learners as, as, or multilingualism as a weakness in our, in our students. All of our students deserve and benefit from a system that believes in their brilliance. I think that's, that's one of our core values of our district is that every student- I think that's, that's one of our, our core values of our district is that every student is brilliant. And how do we cultivate their talents? I think this is the answer to both of those questions now, I guess, is, is students need adults who believe in their brilliance and cultivate their brilliance and don't look at them with a deficit mindset.
Thank you. Mary, excuse me, Mary. What more could be done to reduce the racial achievement gap for St. Louis Park students? And how will you address the real or perceived ESL inequalities?
I think I'm, I'm going to choose to hit on one, one aspect of that very large topic. And that's to kind of discuss the idea of inclusivity versus exclusionary or exclusion. That we see that come up in so many areas in our buildings, right? Anne mentioned discipline practices that are exclusionary and that are taking kids out of the classroom. That disproportionately impacts students of color. We have pullouts, or traditionally, we have had pullouts for intervention services, pullouts for gifted and talented services, pullouts for multi-ALL services. And all of those practices seek to exclude students and separate them from their peers. And so many of those also happen in demographically predictable ways. Meaning that historically, the truth is that we have pulled out more white kids for gifted and talented services, and we have pulled out more kids of color for math interventions. And those pullouts consistently seek to exclude rather than include students. We see this also in practices around our advanced placement classes at the high school, IB classes at the high school, honors classes at the middle school. Those classes do not, are not representative of the intelligence and the brilliance and the giftedness of our students of color in this schools. And so we have continually need to keep, focus on how we include and we provide inclusive opportunities for our students and inclusive support for our students rather than continuing to exclude.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Anne. And and what are your views on bathrooms for trans or gender nonconforming students?
I I was an early, one of the first things that we did when we joined this board was to pass a gender inclusion policy that specifically required us to provide bathrooms and locker room facilities for our transgender and non-binary students. I'm 100% in support of that. I I could not be more proud of that work. And also, I, it is, I just, it's so important that our students see us affirming their humanity on a day-to-day basis in something as basic as using a bathroom. I don't really have anything else to say besides I'm 100% supportive.
Abdi Hakim, what are your views on bathrooms for trans or gender nonconforming students?
My fellow friend Anne have taken my response, you know, what we are fighting for inclusions, you know. So if you want to do the inclusions, you know, it's for everybody. So I'm 100% with Anne.
Thank you. Mary, what are your views on bathrooms for trans or gender nonconforming students?
Yeah, this is the easiest question you've asked so far. We're unanimous in this. I am very proud that I had a big part in drafting our gender inclusion policy. We are among the first public school districts in Minnesota to have had that policy. I actually found out last week, I received the endorsement upfront, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm proud of that because I want our LGBTQ students in our community to know that they have allies on the board, that they have people that support them, that have their back. And being a teenager, being a kid, being a middle schooler is hard enough without feeling like you are not valued, you are not heard, you are not seen, you are not understood. And we will do everything in our power on the board to make sure that our students don't feel that way. And if bathrooms are one aspect of it, well, that's easy.
Thank you. I will start, have this next question. We'll start with Mary. What are the top three challenges for the St. Louis Park School System?
Right now, COVID. I, that's, that's easy when we are still trying to decide or still striving and struggling to make sure that all of our students and staff are safe and that they are, that their families are safe. That is a top priority and a top challenge right now. Financial challenges are ongoing because of how the world has changed in the last two years with COVID, with supply chain issues impacting our our reconstruction projects, with staffing shortages, bus drivers. We can't get enough bus drivers in so many places throughout Minnesota, and it is an issue here, although we're grateful for how stable we are in that area. So financial challenges. And then I would actually, there are so many that I could choose from, but I think I actually will raise the staff, BIPOC staff as needing, we are competing with districts all across the country to get qualified BIPOC staff and teachers who want to come work in our buildings and be leaders and models for our students. And we know that long-term, that is going to be a critical aspect to the success of our BIPOC students. And it's a problem that we're having a hard time solving.
Thank you. We'll go with, to Anne next. What are the top three challenges for the St. Louis Park School System?
Mary said, financial issues, that's absolutely top of mind for me. We've historically been a very fiscally healthy district, but we have uncertain state and federal funding, growing special education costs, increased competition. And then our facilities needs are continuing and, as Mary alluded to, growing in, in light of some of the developments of the last couple of years. So that number one, if we're not fiscally healthy, then we can't do any of the other work that we want to do. We've talked a lot about already racial equity and demographically predictable academic opportunities and results. So I won't say anymore about that, but I would say that absolutely top of mind. And then I'll throw in a new one, which is the increasing needs for student mental health and trauma. And we've seen this in St. Louis Park, and I've seen it a lot in intermediate district 287. The physical and mental health needs of our students have been skyrocketing in the last few years, particularly in light of the racial trauma of the past year and a half. I support trauma-responsive student support, collaboration with community partners, and advocacy. We need advocacy at the, the local, state, and federal level to get our students' needs met to support their, their success at school.
Thank you. Abdi Hakim, what are the top three challenges for the St. Louis Park School System?
The first one, I will echo what Mary and Anne says. But the second one, I will say that one is my first one, is we have to break down the systemic barrier to create long-term change. You know, racism exists in many forms, so we need to break down that one. So I will say that will be the second, COVID. Everybody knows COVID, but the second, the third one is, is going to be bridging the gaps, you know, bridging the student gaps. So those three top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Anne. How do you maintain quality services in a time of limited resources?
How do we maintain quality services in a time of limited resources? I will say we have incredible financial management leadership in our district. One of the best personnel that Superintendent Osai has brought to the district is our Director of Business Services, Patricia Magnuson. And, and she does an amazing job, not only managing our finances, but really educating the board and educating the community on what our needs are, where we can, where we can save money, what, what efficiencies and inefficiencies we have. And so I would say, super sound financial management is, is, it's, it's not very exciting to talk about that, but maybe. But I would say that is that we are, we're, we're very soundly managed, even though we are, we do not have, we have limited resources. And then I guess the other thing is that we, it's, it costs nothing to, 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 to act with your core values in alignment with your core values and your mission. And that is, as a mission-first district, as a children-first district, as a student-centered district, that, that doesn't cost anything. So I would say those two things.
Great, thank you. Abdi Hakim, how do you maintain quality services in a time of limited resources?
I think you should send Mary before me because she was there, but you know, to be honest, I don't know the answer of that question, but I will say they should have some reserve, reserve funds, you know, during strains, but you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, how do you maintain quality services in a time of limited resources?
I think there's a couple of components to this. Fortunately, as Anne said, we do have great fiscal management in the district, as Abdi Hakim referenced. Fortunately, we do have a fund reserve, and we have prior school boards to think for their own fiscal management to make sure that that existed. We are much better off than a lot of our neighboring districts right now. But I think that we have to be willing to, to do the hard work of reevaluating our programs, existing programs, and figure out what's actually working and what are we seeing positive outcomes from and what isn't. One thing I can think of off the top of my head is the International Baptist Program, the IB Program, right? So that is a cost of the district. And so that's a great example of something that should be evaluated on a regular basis anyway, especially during a time of financial challenges that may be upcoming to see, okay, so is this worth the cost? And I think that that then leads to the second issue is we have to still be willing to make investments. If we go in major cost-cutting mode throughout the district to deal with our financial challenges, that might help us in the short term, but it's not going to help us in the long term. St. Louis Park Schools are a community asset, and we must be willing to invest in that asset long-term. And so that means our facilities, that means our staff, that means programming that we are, that is going to yield outcomes. Because we need to make sure that every student in St. Louis Park who lives here wants to go to St. Louis Park Schools and can get a good education here. We need to maximize that enrollment and with community ed programs too.
Great, thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Abdi Hakim. How do you stay informed about the St. Louis Park Student Experience?
Want to say it again?
How do you stay informed about the St. Louis Park Student Experience?
That's a great question, you know. Communication is the key, you know, communication is, is the key. And, you know, St. Louis Park, they have a great resource, communication tools. But, you know, you know, I have, you know, some idea we can use better, you know. They have a multicultural license, license in the different ones, in, 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 in a, in a different cultures. You know, they have Spanish, they have Somalis, they have. But, you know, we can use those resources we have, we have it in a, and, you know, in a, in a better place, you know. And, and go with the technology right now, you know, like going on, we can, we can make a WhatsApp groups. Those who is going to help them, those who don't read, but they can, you, we can send those messages as a voice message, and they can be in that group and they can listen. You know, we can always do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And how do you stay informed about the St. Louis Park Student Experience?
This is something that we have been, I agree with Abdi Hakim, that we can do better on. And then I think over the past couple of years, we have done better on, and we still have a ways to go. We've been working hard to make sure that students are represented on the Finance Advisory Committee, on the Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation and sort of codifying those relationships. The policy committee actually received feedback from a couple of civics, ninth-grade civics classes last year when we were working on a couple of policies that just happened to coincide with some conversations that they were having. But I think, I, I do think we can do more to, to really make sure, make those relationships official. I would love to, I would love to have a student school board representative in our school district. This is something that a lot of school districts have. We've, we've kind of talked about it, COVID got in the way. But I think that that would be, I would, I would love for that to be a priority and then over the next year or two to get official student input and feedback for our school board policies and our decisions right at the table.
Thank you. Mary, how do you stay informed about the St. Louis Park Student Experience?
So I will be the first to admit that this is where a lot of my learning has come from in the last four years is that I have learned through Superintendent Osai and through our district leadership and our school site leadership, the true importance of elevating student voice, elevating student voice at the early childhood level to the elementary level and all the way through our high school seniors and our alumni, for that matter, too. There is so much to be learned by listening and keeping our mouths shut. And so I would, I agree with exactly what Abdi Hakim and Anne said, we have more work to do. Superintendent Osai has been a great leader in having student representation and meeting with students on a regular basis. He had student listening sessions during COVID, parent listening sessions, staff listening sessions, student listening sessions. And I sat in on a lot of those. We go to a lot of activities that our students organize and our students lead. I think that's important. I subscribe to the Echo, so I get the high school newspaper coming at me. It's about six to seven PM every evening. And I talk to my kids, and I talk to my kids' friends, and I talk to my friends about their kids' experiences. I think relationships, communication is, this isn't a hard concept. It's actually pretty easy if we just are authentic about wanting the voice and so that the students know that we are truly listening and caring about what they have to say.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more question. We can start with Mary. How, I'm sorry, how can what is your view about the importance of art in the school system?
Multiple pathways to success and multiple, there are countless ways that our students' brilliance is on display if we give them opportunities to show it. And art is purely and simply one of those ways. And I've actually kind of talked about this a lot. We have an amazing band, we have an amazing orchestra, we have amazing performing arts centers. We have parents who made sure that there are play opportunities at the elementary schools. There are art classes. We have so many great electives at our middle school and high school that allow students to explore this side of themselves. And I, to be, to put it very simply, art is no less valuable than I think a lot of the other things that we teach in our schools. And there needs to be opportunities for our students to find their sparks and to further their joy they are finding through all kinds of art opportunities.
Thank you. Anne, what is your view about the importance of arts in the school system?
I work in an arts organization, and it's, and the arts and music are extremely important in my life. So that, that, that part is easy for me. Um, so that, that, that part is easy from a personal level. Um, I, I, I experienced firsthand the, the, the whole brain, um, impact of the arts when, when someone participates in a creative pursuit. And what I think is really important for our schools is it's not just like, oh yeah, arts are important for, for kids' sparks separately from academics, but arts are academics and they support our academics. That, that reading is, um, is, is music and math is, and music is math and all of, and, and the, and the visual arts as well. I mean, those things all support each other and we can't, we can't separate them. And, and, and then, and when we're, when we're working on math or reading, that kids' creative, um, um, interests are one of the best ways to get them engaged in something that may not seem like, like art or music, but, but very much is. So, um, I, I am, I am very, very supportive and, um, and just aware of the critical importance of the arts in our schools.
Thank you. Abdallah Hakeem, what is your view about the importance of arts in the school system?
I think arts is very important, you know, uh, uh, you know, uh, like, I, I want to share with you guys, like, uh, today I was at the BTO, uh, in Akola. And there was, uh, storm drain arts in front of the school of St. Louis Park, uh, arts they were doing there. So the idea was it, uh, they put the arts over there so people, they will see the drains, the leaves to clean up, that was the idea. So though I am a science guy, but it's very important, the art is very important. My daughter likes art, so I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if ever, I think we have time for one more question. Um, we can go ahead and do that then. And we'll start with Anne. How well is the district doing in meeting the needs of children with special needs?
How well is the district doing, meeting the needs of children with special needs? Um, we have, I don't know how well we're doing. Some, some days I hear that we're doing really great and some days I hear that we're not. And so I think that that is a place that we have, um, room to, room to grow and examine where we are and to look at special education and, and our special needs students through the lens, especially of race. Um, I, again, I sit on the intermediate district 287, which serves our highest needs, special needs, special education students in the West Metro. And, um, and I think we see there that there, that a lot of disproportionality applies, racial disproportionality applies to the way that we serve students with special, special needs in St. Louis Park and everywhere else in the metro and, and our, in our country. So, um, I think that that is in particular a place that needs to be examined through the lens of race. Um, and, and, and needs to continue to advocacy for, for funding for our, um, for our students that we don't, we, we pay four, $4 million, I think, is our current special cross subsidy that we take out of the general fund. Um, those students absolutely deserve to have their, their needs met and, um, the, the, the individuals with disabilities and education act has never been funded near where, um, it was promised to have been before I was even born. So, um, I guess that's, that's what I will, that's what I'll say.
Thank you. Abdallah Hakeem, how well is the district doing in meeting the needs of children with special needs?
Uh, that's a really good question, you know, I, you know, uh, so I can answer that question in perspective of the community as I was, you know, uh, engaging with them, listening to their history, their experience, their struggles, you know, so, um, I think we need to look in the program evaluations. You know, that's the one, I think that's a certain point to look and see what's working, what's not working in the special education evaluations. The other one, you know, I, I will not only say the special kids, I, I have to say, we have, we have to make sure to look, to lift up those who are in the bottom, you know, give them necessary tools to succeed. You know, and, uh, uh, the school board, they're really doing a great job and I would like to be part of those, you know, groups, you know, and, uh, hello? Hello? I can't hear you guys.
Hello?
Yeah, am I disconnected?
I can hear you.
Did you hear what I say? Oh, I have to say it again?
Yes.
You guys good?
Yes, we heard you. Yep.
Well, I don't know where I'm at, but what I'm saying is, is the special education, I think we have to look on the evaluation parts and see what's working, what's not working. The other thing I want to say, we have to look all the students and, you know, especially those are in the bottom and give them the necessary tools to succeed. And then, you know, as I said before, that's a, uh, collective, you know, responsibility. And it's, uh, the school board, current school board, they really do a great job and I would like to be part of that, you know? And I have a lot of experience, different, listen from the different communities, you know? If I, if I start to talking now, it's going to take a lot, but that's what I have to say, but I look forward to working with you guys. And that's I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, how well is the district doing in meeting the needs of children with special needs?
I, I, I would argue that we know the district has a long way to go still, but I, um, want to be clear that I don't want to place that at the hands of just our district. Because the way the special education works in the state of Minnesota and throughout the country has inherent limitations. Anne mentioned the funding struggles and the funding problems, which are very real. Real, we are, I think, our cross subsidy, which means the amount that we have to take out of our general fund to pay for mandated special ed services that should be funded through the mechanisms that require those services. I think we're at about 4.868 million, is that right, Anne? Yep. Um, and so we need the funding. And then the way that special ed services are structured, whether that comes from, you know, speech therapy to, um, the care for a student with, um, EBD or autism, a lot of those are state mandated programs. And we have limitations on how we implement and follow the, that programming. And so I would just, I say that to set forth that this is a bigger issue than St. Louis Park. And that we need statewide, national, but certainly state-level guidance and improvements in, um, the rules, the protocols, the procedures, identification, racial, um, inequities that are inherent in that program as well. Um, so this is another area for lobbying and legislative intervention.
Thank you. We will go ahead and move forward to closing statements.
I want to add one more, if you allow me that.
Okay, can, um, yeah, we would put it in the closing statements, would that be okay? Um, so yeah, thank you, so we're on time here. Um, we'll start with Mary for closing statements from the candidates. You each get, um, two minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you again, Krista. Thank you, Deb. Thank you for the entire, um, league for, for doing this event. And I just want to say especially this year, right? As was mentioned, there are three of us running for three spots. And it would be really easy for people to not pay much attention to this election, especially in St. Louis Park. We have three of, of the four ward races are also uncontested. Um, but it is as important as ever, if not more important right now for people to be involved and to be engaged. I am so grateful for Abdallah Hakeem for stepping forward and running and to serve. I mean, he has made very clear and I could not agree more that he is representing members of this community who have not had representation on the board before, who deserve representation, not only families, but our students in our buildings who should be able to see somebody who has a similar life experience as them, sitting on the board with them, so I, with us. So I am very much looking forward to serving with you, Abdallah Hakeem, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve with Anne and my other colleagues on the board. Um, and so I just, I want to encourage people to still show up because, and to vote because events like this are important so that you get to know who we are and so that we can create a relationship with the people of St. Louis Park and the voters, whether you have kids in our schools or not. We represent you, we represent, um, we are the, the fiscal managers of the district of this community asset. We are accountable to all of you and so please vote, please be in, in communication with us. Share with us your thoughts, share with us how you feel, ask of us what you want us to be bringing forward on your behalf. Um, I would be grateful for your vote. You can ask, get in touch with me through my website, marytombbeck.com. Ask any further questions, be in touch in any way you want to be. Just thank you for being involved. Thank you for making St. Louis Park an engaged, active community that can hold all of us accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Abdallah Hakeem, your closing statement.
Uh, I just want to just add one more before I say the closing statement. So, um, I agree with Mary, but you know, uh, St. Louis Park, they can do better. Uh, special education, if I come to it, there is a early intervention, St. Louis Park, they have very good program in early positions. But when bilingual kids, they apply in early interventions, they have been denied because they say the kid is being exposed by two languages. By the time he's pre-schools, he was accepted. And, uh, when he's accepted, then he lost the time for interventions. And I think St. Louis Park, they can do better, even, and that is the policy in there because it's the policy only, I mean, the evaluation only designed for those who one language. But we can do better, you know, regardless of how many languages speak, you get the same tools every kid gets. As a conclusion, uh, I will thank you, Mary and Anne, uh, and, uh, you know, I will not say my, I'm asking you to vote to zip you out of next four years as a school board. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, we'll go ahead with your closing.
Abdallah Hakeem, thank you for that, um, for adding on to your, um, from your experience with the early intervention services. That was a story that, um, that, that I'm taking with me. Um, it's really been a privilege and an honor, um, to serve this, the students in the community of St. Louis Park um, as a, as a board member for the past four years. And as Mary mentioned at the beginning, that the last, the last year has been hard. It has been not what any of us wanted to happen in our, in our board terms or our lives. Um, but I'm really proud of so many of the things that we have done in the last four years and even in the last year. And, um, even the last year, we, we, we never stopped our, our work. It was challenged and it was slowed down in many ways, but we didn't stop. We passed, uh, an amazing new student behavior intervention policy. We're working on a racial equity policy. Um, we passed the Strategic Plan for Racial Equity Transformation. Um, and it's this work that we're going to do when we're building our new normal, um, that's going to confront systemic racism and inequity, which is, is, I think we can all agree, is really the, 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 the top of the, the problems. We have a lot. Um, but that's, but that's at the top and that's our number one laser-focused priority right now. Um, I, I very much appreciate, um, the League of Women Voters for, for holding this again and for help, for allowing us to the chance to like hear from each other, which has been a delight and a treat. Um, and, and to share with the voters, um, again, please, please turn on and vote. It's important. Even in, I've been calling it not an off year, but an odd year. It's an odd year this year. So, um, I encourage everyone who's watching to vote on November 2nd. Um, and I, and I, and thank you to Deb and to Krista and Carlotta for, for doing this for the League of Women Voters. Good night.
Statements. Thank you. I wanted to thank the candidates for participating this evening as well as the members of the community and so the league who submitted questions. And also thank you to the St. Louis Park League of Women Voters.